Everybody. It being 5:30, we will, I will call the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, May 6th to order. I'll call Chris.
All right, we'll try again. Ms. Proper. Mr. Giller. Mr. Lees. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here.
Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, do we have any changes to the minutes? Everybody good? Okay, great. Any changes to the agenda, Chris?
Changes.
With that, I'm going to open the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment on historic preservation issues. If you're online, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine and then star six to unmute yourself.
There are a few people in line, but no hands raised.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody in attendance here that would like to comment on historic preservation issues? Okay, then we will move on to the consent calendar. We have the Spies Residence, 101 Clack Road, PL 2025-0070. Would anybody care to call this one up? No? Okay. Then we will move on to the final hearing on the Imperial Hotel, BGV parcel number five, or four, sorry, 1599 Ski Hill Road, PL 2024-0475. And Sarah.
All right, one moment while I pull up my files. They're so big, I don't know if they will make it. No, I'm just kidding. All right, everybody. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Sarah Crump, Planner for the Town. Tonight, we have the third and final hearing for the Imperial Hotel and Private Residences, as well as a variance for the Cucumber Gulch PMA. This proposal is for hotel condominium, town home, and commercial development consisting of approximately 36 hotel units, 59 condominium units, including 76 lock-offs. A portion of those will be fractional ownership and a portion of those will be whole ownership, nine town home, and nine town home units. The project will also include guest amenities, commercial, commercial areas, including resort guest services, as well as a restaurant, bar, private dining area, proposed pet, day spa, and aquatics facilities for guests. So this evening for the third hearing, I'm going to go over the items that changed since the second preliminary hearing and discuss those, how they relate to our development code and the development agreement which this project is pursuant to. And then we'll also discuss a public comment letter that was submitted and then a final point summary at the end. So changes since the second preliminary hearing. There were some minor changes to the overall square footage and density proposed, but you'll know in the staff report, it states that they are still compliant with the 220 SFE requirement. They're just below that threshold of 219. And some change SFEs. And then, of course, those revisions changed also the density calculations and the employee mitigation requirement calculation. So they are required to have 207.93 employees mitigated, housing mitigated for 35% of that amount. And as far as we know, the Entrada parcel where they will supply that employee housing will meet that amount of housing that's required. I'll just quickly state these changes and then go on to how they relate to the development agreement and the development code. There were, was an increase in the amount of fireplaces from 71 to 80, and they're still meeting the requirement for no more than three in each unit. And they have three communal fireplaces that'll be in the common areas. They've decreased the parking just by two spaces from 211 to 209. They're still meeting the amount that's required by, which is 192. Let's see. The first substantive change that affects one of our policies is regarding the Architectural Policy Number Five. So just hop down to, let's see. You know, you practice and then you just can't. It doesn't work.
It's not just me.
No? Okay, we'll be scrolling for a while, but in the meantime, a couple of very minor roofline changes to the western east facades. These are the subtraction of a dormer that was previously proposed. And then one of the, several rows of dormers was, or well, a solid roofline was divided into a couple of different dormers. But I just want to point those out. Staff has no concerns with this. They're still meeting the Architectural Guidelines of Policy Five, as well as the contemporary, between contemporary and rustic mandate of the master plan. So this area here, or no, this area here was previously a full covering with roof and now it's two dormers. And then there was an extra, oh, no, I'm on the wrong page. This was a full roof and there was an extra dormer here. Those are removed now. So very minor changes. The applicant has also provided physical samples as you can. They're very sturdy and heavy. And we can attest, we brought those down here this afternoon. It's required the elevator. Consistent with the proposed plans previously, they're meeting the same color and material standards that they've stated the entire three hearings. So no significant changes there either. The largest change, I would say, is the movement of the walkway. There was a requirement from the Energy Utility to relocate an electrical line. So this required a re, revision of the western walkway as well as the landscaping on this side. Previously, the walkway jutted out a little further here and didn't, didn't stay quite as close to the building. They've pulled that back to make this area completely available to that Energy Utility line. And then, of course, they can't put any landscaping over that area. So the landscaping plan in this western edge has been revised. They are still well above the threshold of precedent for positive two points on landscaping. They're providing 37 trees per acre, which is more than past projects which have received positive points. So we don't have any issues and the tweaks to the landscaping here, they just moved it further into their interior. We also have a sample of the synthetic turf that's going to be in the rear play area. And there was, that was a question from Commissioner last time of what color it would be or how would it feel. Actually feels really similar to natural grass. Another change that the applicant has made based on comments from the public in the previous hearing, they have added a third pedestrian access easement. So this affects Policy 16R. Just scroll up here. So previously, you would not have been able to walk from the 4 o'clock Run subdivision off of Sawmill Road here and access the staircase, but now they've added a landing and a dirt pathway. They're gonna platformal easement for pedestrians. So there will be access from this neighborhood directly. That you won't have to go all the way down to Ski Hill Road and come back up the staircase if you want to access the snow. I'm taking off over here. So that change doesn't affect the point analysis. They were already receiving positive three points for the recreational easement there, or pedestrian recreational easement, and so no change with that. I think now's a good time to go ahead and discuss the western facade and the view corridor. At the previous hearing, there were comments and questions from Commissioners about the circulation plan for getting onto the snow in this area and its relationship to the staircase and how ADA circulation would work. You can see in the blue, that's the ADA circulation pattern and the green is for pedestrians. So you can easily go into this interior elevator right inside the door. Or if you need to, you can take the ramp this way to access some of the amenities over here for ADA access. And then pedestrians can use this staircase or, or the ramp if they choose, or the elevator. So here you can see that, just an overhead view of, and, and it gives you a little more perspective on the width of the staircase, which was a question previously. And I wanted to point out that the revisions to the staircase, moving that closer to the building, it didn't change the width of any of those that are proposed. They're all still consistent with the staircase that you may be familiar with on Peak Seven is about the size. Okay. So moving on over to some of the energy conservation policies. They have made some changes to their proposal that are nondiscretionary for points. So they're actually going to supply three additional EV chargers with this plan instead of only the two above the minimum that's required. So they will be eligible for three positive EV charger points. And then as well, they've, as they're moving forward with civil plans, they've had more analysis on the energy efficiency of the building. And they've provided a consultant analysis that states they will exceed the IECC code by as much as 27.5%. So that, and they're required to meet the 2018 IECC code. So that is eligible for positive two points. So an additional three points there that they've picked up since the previous hearing. Let's talk about what everybody loves dogs. So the, the pet kennel is actually, it's, I want to point out that it's not for public use. The public won't be able to bring their dog out and let it out freely. It's only for guests of the paying spa amenity. And so it's more like a dog daycare. Just get to that section of the plan. The applicant has stated that their business model for this is to operate it during the day while people need pet care. And it wouldn't be like an overnight leave your dog forever outside. So, and I want to make a point that the applicant has their own incentives for making sure that this area stays clean and that it doesn't become a nuisance with noise or become a problem that would affect or impose impacts on the neighbor. I apologize, I'm just not finding the right pages. I have them written out, but my pointer won't. We'll just go to the main site plan. So they have reduced this area in size somewhat from the previous proposal, which was around 2,000 square feet. Now it's closer to 1150 or 1200 square feet. And that's accommodating in the move of the walkway as well as some additional snow storage area in this location, which was the concern previously. So they are providing for adequate snow storage for the dog pet play area. And previously, you discussed a variance for this. So it was agreed that they could have a pet fence that exceeded the 54 inches in height and 400 square feet. That's written in the code because those provisions are more applicable to single-family homes rather than a commercial pet area. Some additional notes since the second hearing, the, regarding construction activities. So the applicant has provided proof of a termination agreement for the shoring tieback easement. This was previously approximately this location. That's a signed and recorded agreement provided from One Ski Hill Place LLC in between the applicant. With this, the town doesn't have any concerns about construction in that area. But we want to point out that even if the shoring tieback easement had not been terminated, the proposal is not proposing anything that would be precluded by, would have been precluded by that easement, which was subsurface and a non-exclusive entitlement, so. They have provided a photometric plan for the final hearing and it complies with our requirements for only two tenths of a foot candle or less light emitted at the edge of the property. At entrances to the property, you can exceed that somewhat. And they've provided examples of the proposed fixtures that they'll be using on the exterior. Some of these fixtures, I noted in the staff report, will need modification to be compliant with our dark sky requirements. So these, these top three fixtures here, they'll need some inserts to shield the light downward. And this, this more candelabra chandelier will be underneath the awning of the drop-off area in the front. But they're still going to provide shades on each of those candles in order for that to be compliant. So the light is not escaping outward and only downward. Last, before we discuss the point summary, I just want to go over some questions that were raised about the view corridor and the spacing between One Ski Hill Place and the proposed Imperial. You can see from this diagram, the purple is the massing of the previously approved East Peak Eight Hotel. So it would have jutted out a little further than the proposal here and the spacing would have been less between the two buildings. This proposal exceeds the 47-foot requirement that's in a private agreement between the applicant and One Ski Hill Place. So you can see the dimensions shown here for the distance between the buildings and each other. However, the town can't enforce this private agreement and we would not be subjecting the applicant to the, to be beholden to that 47-foot setback from the building in this case. We can only enforce the development code and provisions of the master plan and the development agreement. So for our purposes, they must abide by Policy Nine, which the relative policy states for this case, five-foot side setback because we're measuring for the residential requirement. And they are exceeding that, and that's measured to the property line, not to the neighboring building. But you can see that there's a little bit of a difference between the previously approved East Peak Eight distance, which would have been somewhat closer to the One Ski Hill Place than the building that's proposed now. All right, so with that, we have our final point analysis as recommended by staff. That's the following. We have negative 23 points total, including negative 10 under Policy 6R for the building height that exceeds more than one-half story above the recommended height for the land use district and what's recommended in the master plan. Negative one for building height for an unbroken bridge line proposed that's greater than 50 feet in length. We have negative nine for the amount of heated paving that's greater than 5,000 square feet. And then also negative three under energy conservation as well for the outdoor heated pools and spas, which exceed their approximately 1,148 square feet. And then for positive points, a total of positive 29. We have positive one point under Policy 15R for refuse because they've integrated the trash storage area and recycling pickup into the primary building. Under Policy 16R, circulation, those easements that we talked about for pedestrian and skier access are worthy of positive three. For parking, all the required parking is away from public view and underground. And so they're receiving positive four under Policy 18R. The loading and delivering area is separated from the guest entrance, so that is worth positive two under Policy 19R. They've got a robust landscaping plan that exceeds the past precedent for positive two points under Policy 22R. And then they're providing the allocated space for the BOEC, including access to their outdoor aquatic facilities. And that's a dedicated 1,668 square feet of programming area just for the BOEC under Policy 24R worth four points. There will be a year-round all-electric shuttle system worth positive four points under Policy 25R. And then the following are under Policy 33R, four points for the weather monitoring system that controls their heated paving. Positive two points for the energy efficiency stated that it will be above the IECC code. And there is a condition in the findings and conditions that holds them to that. So we'll have to prove that before CO on the building, on the final CO. And then finally, positive three points for installation of the three EV charging stations. So cumulative, that's positive six points for a passing score. So tonight, the staff recommends that you do approve the Imperial Hotel with the attached findings and conditions. I'm happy to take additional questions, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Great presentation, as always. Questions for staff? Alan?
Yeah, a couple. Sarah, could you go to, I don't know if you can, it's page, it's page 85. It's the one with the showing the setback or the view corridor separation measurements with the purple.
There we go.
So I was just wondering, just to, you know, make sure this is clear, if you were to draw a purple line between the, from the corner of the part where One Ski Hill Place juts out on the left side, where that 50-foot, 39-inch or 50.39 from that corner, but make it parallel to the 5347. I was trying to extrapolate. Does that, I just wanted to make sure that's over 47 feet?
I believe so, but I haven't measured that area specifically. It does appear that it would be over the 47 feet because you're measuring to the building facade.
It's just that that corner is a little closer than the corner to the left of that. I just wanted to make sure that that was 48 feet.
Um, it, it would appear that it would be greater than that, but I'll let the applicant speak further. Again, we can't be beholden to that agreement that's written.
Yeah, I was trying to measure it on my screen just to make sure. And then I noticed on the, on the release of the easement for the shoring tiebacks. So signing for One Ski Hill Place ownership was Vale Resorts. So do they still technically own the property or were they, was it just the owner at the time of the, of the easement granting?
There were two signatories releasing it, so Vale Resorts and then also One Ski Hill Place LLC was the last signature.
Yeah, but it was, it was Vale Resort, it was signed by, by Vale Resorts, as Vale Resorts.
I think that's a great question for the applicant.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll save it.
Thanks.
That's it.
Elaine, questions?
I have no question.
Thank you. Matt, questions for staff?
I do have some questions. First one is like the energy audit. I don't quite understand where they got the 27.5%. Like that math doesn't, like I did the math and it doesn't work. And then the, the 27% is stated on the table, but then it says in the verbiage below that the current design exceeds the efficiency required by almost 20%. So we have almost 20%, we have 27 and a half percent, and then if you do the math, it's 30.1%. So just like in a small space, there's a lot of inconsistencies in it. That just calls into question the validity of the report.
And you, and those are within the, the analysis provided by the?
By the 14 or whatever.
I'm going to defer to the applicant to speak to those, but.
Sorry.
And then I will, I will say in the code, the requirement to get the positive two points is to exceed 20% efficiency. So that's what you'll see in the findings and conditions. They have to meet 20% or greater.
It's just strange that they're so inconsistent with the numbers.
Okay.
And then I have another comment on like the point analysis. I don't know whether it's a question or a comment. Is there another?
We can save that comment.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt. Susan, questions?
Yeah, thanks a lot, Sarah. I think that I'm going to ask my questions of the applicant. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Giller, questions for staff? No questions?
Unusual.
Commissioner, no, nevermind. I also have no questions. So at this time, would Graham or Mike like to present? No, Mike?
And Graham, we, we set this up down here, so if you and, you know, other members of your team want to be down, down there so you can kind of pivot back and forth potentially.
Hi, Graham.
Mistakes, sitting next to Mike.
Graham Frank from BGV, Bill Campy from DTJ, Mike Dudik, BGV, all on behalf of the applicant. We also have Andy Peters from our team from Otten Johnson, if you have legal questions, which it seems like. Alan, you may, as we go through this. So we have Andy as well, if you have legal questions. So at the highest level, I think what you guys see in these plans now addresses what I think was a very successful process. I think the best exhibit of that is the BOEC access to the space, right? Not only creating access so they can get to their space down ADA to the vehicles, but also into the interior of our space so they can enjoy it just like everybody else up there. And it's not just an isolated use versus what's happening today. So that has been something that's been a product of this process. And I think bringing that into the space has been great. I think what you guys see on the Sawmill Run Road access is again, a product of this, discussing with the neighbors, deciding what would be best for that community to A, get to the ski easement up and down, beat a Ski Hill Road to the gondola. Optionality, right? It was one of the things that we talked about as we went through this. Right? It was one of the things that we talked about as we went through this process. Also, as you're talking about the view corridor and all of the items outside the structure of the building that are there, we sucked those closer to the building and further away from One Ski Hill Place from the last meeting. As we acknowledged the needs from Excel and the needs for the neighbor. We've had meetings with neighbors on both sides of the site since the last meeting. Ethan, I know that was a request of yours. And I think those have been productive conversations. And then last, you know, we talked, Matt, a lot through the process, we've talked snowmelt, we've talked energy efficiency, we've talked all of those things. And I think that process got us to the report you had, and we can get into those isolated numbers of the report, but each one represents a different system in the building, whether it be the exterior system, the mechanical system. And then the cumulative of those is where you get to that twenty-seven-five. And if we need to clarify that more in the report, we can. But I think all in all, again, and I don't want it to lose its value between Mark and Chris and Sarah, this this effort continues. Week after week, meeting after meeting on now what the most complex building is that will go in Breckenridge, I think in the history, and I think it's been a good process, and I think it's been a spot that has gotten everybody closer, and I just, we are appreciative of that process and we're tracking all of this is crazy. We live it every day. And we come in and out and give different things, different questions, and the ability to pull the string through this is amazing. So we are appreciative of the process. It has been a good process, and I think Mike, I think it's a great-looking building. Right? And it's a hard judge. So that's where we are, and we can answer any questions that you guys may have for us. So thank you.
Graham, appreciate it. Well then, I know Alan's got some questions.
Well, one was just the separation, and when I saw those lines, I thought, okay, I just I want to make sure we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's here. So I just saw that one measurement, and I just wanted to make sure that was, if you move that
If you move it to
Line parallel from that corner with the other.
Triangle, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, beyond forty-seven feet, yeah.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Okay, that's the only thing I had.
So you've had, you've had all these meetings with your neighbors, why are we getting all these letters about this forty-seven foot supposedly easement? Are they not getting the message that it's greater than forty-seven?
We are really interested in that question as well. As recently as Friday, we met with that neighborhood group. We understood that if we decided to come back to this commission at a later date and relocate the pet spa to another part of the building that's not facing One Ski Hill Place or any other area in the building that's away from that, that all of the concerns that you saw in that letter were, would be vacated and we'd receive letters of support. We understood that through the weekend to still be the position. And we were extremely surprised to see those letters this morning. It would follow a path that we've seen with one neighbor in that neighborhood group. Not representative of the entire neighborhood, but we've seen that on other projects. Where almost a re-trade scenario where we've continued to address it. But we understood all of those to be addressed as of our meeting on Friday, and we're expecting to have letters of support today. So we were surprised as well. Alan, to your question on who signed the document, so we went back and traced through what we understand, A, the ownership, Vale Resorts, B, the representative of One Ski Hill Place LLC, verified that with Vale Resorts, the developer. And Vale Summit Resorts, the former owner. Traced that through, and everything you saw on that signed document was sufficient to Vale Resorts, what we believe was One Ski Hill Place HOA, but more importantly, the title company to vacate that easement.
Got it. Okay. So they basically were the owner at the time that the easement was no longer necessary, and that's who's obligated to sign.
Yep. Yep.
I'd like to point out at this time that I believe all of the questions on all of those letters are not really pertinent to the issues before this commission. So I just wanted to point that out.
And if I may just add to that, and first of all, I want to express my gratitude. I haven't been to the nuts and bolts, I'm aware of what's happening, but some of you were here for the approval of the gondola building four years ago. So you've been through this slog on getting these big buildings done and evaluated, and I greatly appreciate your time. I mean, it was a I don't know, I don't want to say pull the carpet out from beneath your feet, but we spent a lot of time to get that building approved and then walked away from it, I think to the betterment of the community and the negotiations we had with the town council, and that in turn shouldered you with some restrictions in your process, which I appreciate and understand that you guys worked hard to make that all work as well. And so I just want to recognize the time and effort that you guys have put into the endless hours, a five-hundred-page packet to dig through and get through all this stuff, and the amount of time that you have to devote. And I'll say this unequivocally, that there's always tension in the process. I think Chris and Mark, Shannon do, Sarah do a great job in guiding us through this, but without a doubt, my buildings are better because of this process. And we find things that we either didn't see or we look at differently because of the comments that we receive in here, and the buildings get better. And so we're grateful to you guys for the part you play in making the building better for us selfishly, but for the community more importantly, that what we end up with as a community is better access for the BOEC because we're trying to solve a community need there, and with your input, they were able to solve the things like that. I personally have been in the homes of two of the neighbors on the east side of the building to talk with them about their concerns during construction, after construction, and they're happy. I was on the phone call on Friday and, you know, went home on Friday night thinking this is a done deal, and when I heard there was letters from One Ski Hill Place this morning, I thought they'd be letters of support. This was a complete one-eighty and unexpected. And I can only speculate as to why, and I think those of you who know what I'm saying, know exactly what I'm saying. So and I'll just leave that at that. But I don't want to lose sight of that, you're right, it's not germane to the planning commission decisions. What we're here to do today is to pass the project and a positive point analysis for me personally, and on behalf of all our seven-hundred employees to express our gratitude for the time you guys spend doing this. So thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Matt, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Aside from that math, I mean, I just used the two numbers that are proposed and the reference number, and that's all you need for that simple equation. And I still get twenty-seven and a half, but it's it's a moot point, but this, I'm not going to do the But I mean, I guess if they're beholden to that number, then that number kind of matters.
Did you have them mean twenty percent?
Okay, just the twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Susan, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so I had the same question about Vale Resorts signing the termination of the easement, and I figured that it had to do with, you know, who owned the property when the easement was created. What's confusing to me is all that being said, why don't the homeowners seem to know that this has occurred? Was the HOA not notified? Or why weren't they aware of this?
So Andy Peters. I think that, so the homeowners association has taken the position that their declaration gave them that easement at some point, which to my mind would be really strange because it was an easement for the construction of that building. Why would it matter for the homeowners association? And, you know, we took a look at that document, the declaration, and don't think that it does that. And, you know, One Ski Hill Place LLC and VSRI all looked at that as well and came to the same conclusion that the rights were there for the construction of the building. So I think that we're getting this as a sort of we had this declaration, we thought maybe we got something that we didn't. But it just wouldn't make sense for an HOA to get a shoring easement that would be for the construction of the building where the HOA ultimately occupies. So, you know, the sensible outcome of this is it was for the construction, it always stayed with the Vale Resorts entity, and then they terminated it afterwards.
Okay. Have you provided the the agreement to the HOA?
I don't know that they've seen the termination. Oh, to their attorney, yeah.
Yeah.
So they have that now.
And that was one of the comments, right, was from their attorney? I assume they've
Yeah, he was one of the folks who wrote a letter that came in this morning about that.
Right, okay.
Yeah, if we send it to them, then they have, their attorney has it.
And it's all recorded on title.
Right, yeah, I mean, I saw that.
Can I just say too, for the record, that in spite of the one-eighty, that I'm not spiteful, and I'm not. And when the time comes that HOA wants to strike an agreement that talks about the dog park and relocating it, we'll do that. We're good neighbors, and we try and do that every single day. And so we are shocked that we didn't have letters of support today. We will not act in a spiteful, revengeful way and say pound sand because you didn't do it in time. We'll still work with them. And so that's for the record, and we'll do that. And we were, this was unexpected that what occurred today in the inbound emails.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I'm really just trying to get stuff on the public record. Yeah. So in that mode, my other question has to do with the dog area. Which of these turf examples are going to be in the dog area?
Yeah, it'll be the thicker.
The thicker one.
Actually, the opposite.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I don't want to touch him. Just pee on it.
Did you test them?
They both seem to look great, but feel free to touch them.
Yeah, I think it's the lighter, the smaller one.
The lighter, thinner one, and it has, it's more permeable.
Yeah, because we have a system in that area to kind of make it easier to clean. So that's really the definitive.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I'm
It'll look, the important note of it, it doesn't look like the turf that you probably pictured in your mind from fifty years ago, that's just that thin, whatever. I mean, it really looks we do this on very high-end resort projects over the world because it's more sustainable, less watering, and holds up better to use for weddings, we use it for weddings and things like that. So in terms of the quality, that's what we're talking about. It's not kind of what you pictured that they used to just put over asphalt on, you know, nineteen-fifties playgrounds or something.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm less focused on the durability and more on the ability to keep it clean. And that's why I was asking whether it was going to be the thicker one or the thinner one.
Yeah, it's specifically, it's specifically, that area would be specifically designed for that use, if that makes sense. And we do that in many, many projects all over the country.
And then, so when you say it's regularly cleaned and maintained, does that mean daily? Twice a day?
Yeah, so we put details in this to our response to Sarah, but we will have our employees will govern that area.
Okay.
And so that is, it'll be cleaned on a daily basis. In addition, we will put a hot water hose bib out there because you can wash all of this that didn't underdrain through and out through the drainage system to prevent smell buildup, all of those things.
Yeah.
And we use this exact system directly below condos at our most recently delivered project in Avon, and it works phenomenally well.
So you've used it
Correct. With the same underdrainage system.
Oh, great. Well, good.
And to Sarah's earlier point, there's very high-valued real estate right adjacent to this in our project. There's some really signature units on that side of the building. So the idea of this being important to us as well is very much on our mind.
Yeah. Great. Okay. And, you know, I would just point out, you know, as far as the obstruction of the views, that the fencing is very open. It's not like you have flanks going up that would really block anything. So that doesn't concern me either. Good, thank you.
Can we pass around at least the siding samples, please?
Yeah, thanks.
The rocks. Looks like some good rocks.
I could write on that.
Well, while we're looking at those, Mike, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Sure. Thanks for being here. Looking forward to construction, which I realize is down the road. Could you speak to estimated duration of construction? Any means and methods in construction to help mitigate the impacts on the neighborhood? Fencing, sound walls, hours of construction? Give us some understanding of what to expect.
All right, so good question, Mike. So in our discussions with Sawmill Run, obviously that will be in construction access as we are moving through construction, as we're doing excavation and taking everything out of the hole. We've worked with that neighborhood to discuss when we'll do watering on the road, regrading on the road, traffic counts today versus traffic counts in the future. So gone through all of that. We discussed with the same neighbors, how access and fencing will work beside the ski easement and the travel up and around what will be a very large hole for a period of time. And then as soon as we can safely get people across what will be the new easement, we will implement that to prevent as far a hike up the hill. We can't predict that now because, right, we have to get construction drawings, we've got to get a permit, and we've got to get to that point in construction. Overall duration, we're looking at thirty-six to forty months end to end. It's a big, complex building with a huge hole to start that project. That is where we're projecting things now from start to finish. We expect to submit our construction permit drawings before October first of this year. Then go through the permitting process, all the sign-offs, all of those things. Our desire is to pull an excavation and grading permit to start that work this fall, get as much as we can finished before shutting down for the winter. Obviously, erecting precast and steel during the winter is a very hard undertaking, number one, and it's extremely disruptive. So our hope is if we can get that and get that accomplished close to the bottom of the hole, then coming up with footers and erection immediately that following spring, that would minimize that impact during that peak travel time on Ski Hill Road. So our desire is to do that. Then you get, as you know, more of an enclosed scaffolded site that prevents, you know, anything going outside of the building. And we're hopeful that we can get through that period topped out on the One Ski Hill side of the building and moving on across the building where you get less and less public interaction. So that is our phase in construction staging as you look at moving across that site. Getting the COs and phases, TCOs and phases up through the building and moving across towards Sawmill Run. So getting that most impactful phase done first, and then moving away from One Ski Hill Place towards the neighbors on Sawmill Run, which have a better buffer through the site.
And then a follow-up question. Often there's trash and debris in construction, some of it might be the project, some of it is just all of the activities. Any efforts to keep the site clean?
So we will do that, and we will also, through our BGV sustainability arm, we will divert as much waste as we can from going in the dump. So separate recycling dumpster and trash dumpster, whereas, you know, most construction projects, everything's going straight to the dump. So we'll use our BGV sustainability team to divert as much as possible. While we're also going to pursue grants, even in the demolition of the current structures that are up there to minimize that impact that's going into the landfill. It's the building, the building that has a large carbon footprint, you know, of everything. We all talk about the ongoing operations, but as you know, in the business, it's that building, so we're going to divert as much as possible. We've had success on our other projects doing that. And perpetuate that. We think dollar for dollar, it saves us money with the diversion program, but it also keeps everybody pretty honest on the site as we do that. And you get, we think, better buy-in from the subcontractor community, that you're actually doing something to help at the same time, right? It's really easy to just throw sheets of drywall down the trash chute and never think about it again. But when you get that conscious effort, we think it helps the safety on the site, we think it helps the buy-in on the site. And we've seen that on our other projects. So that, we will implement that. And then obviously, it's a complex site, it's a very it's a high-energy site, and it's a dynamic site, especially as you talk about the snow buildup on the mountainside, kids skiing right outside of the site, construction site safety. So we've already worked through that program with Vale Resorts, where we're going to put trailers, where we're going to put the fence, how we're going to do the cat grooming up against that side of the construction site, how we're going to provide access around the site. We did a lot of that when we built Building Three Ground Colorado right at the base of the gondola, and at one point actually had to cut off the gondola platform to put in the loading dock and all those things. So all of those same site logistics and safety plans we will implement that we had there with zero incidents with the public. we will implement that we had there with zero incidents with the public at probably the highest, probably the highest visitation site at any ski resort in America during a construction site, right? And we will implement that on next door when we do parcel four.
Okay, thanks. That was an informative answer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mike. I have no questions for the applicant. So at this time, we'll move to public comments, starting with anybody online. So if you're online and you wish to make comment, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine. If you're attending the meeting by phone, then star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, so I'm going to go in alphabetical order, starting with Alex Doritick.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Alex Doritick, and I represent the One Ski Hill Place HOA. I was intending only to speak as to the shoring easement termination and as to the viewpoint corridor. However, having heard the comments of the applicant, I do need to address what was stated about the meeting on Friday. I was at that meeting, and to hear their comments is frankly, nothing short of astonishing. What we were told as One Ski Hill Place HOA was there would be no outdoor dog park, no outdoor play area. It's bewildering to hear about permeable surfaces when that was something that was told, we were told that would never happen. And when they discussed a way to, a potential solution, it was we'll get rid of the dog park, but you can't ask anything about anything else. It was a take it or leave it, and it was very much a get you off the phone, out of this conversation as soon as possible. They would not take questions. They would not provide any further information. That stated, as to the shore easement termination, this easement was originally instituted in 2010, after the vast majority of the building had already been done, close in time to the One Ski Hill Place declarations in April of 2010. That's not, that wouldn't be a temporary construction easement when the building is mostly completed. In addition, it was transferred to One Ski Hill Place HOA by action of the condominium declaration. So the fact that One Ski Hill Place LLC has now removed it is incredibly problematic. This is for the benefit of the HOA, and there will be litigation about that. And I know that from your perspective, this isn't, this isn't something you want to tread into, but I really want to caution that this is going to be an issue, that it's been removed outside of the HOA is incredibly problematic. And the one of the things, I don't have much time that I want to speak to, is the view corridor non-compliance, and I know that there's no obligation among the planning commission to give any credence to a private agreement. However, if you look at the page 73 renderings, it's not 47 feet. And all of the, there's nothing to indicate. There's no radial measurement, which is standard for view corridors. The page 40, 73 renderings look like 22 feet, and we're incredibly concerned. If there was more information, if they would have answered questions, we might have answered those questions, but that we haven't been given that.
Thank you for your comments. I would like to remind everybody that these issues are not pertinent to the issues before this commission today. So please keep your questions to issues that are before this commission today, codes and whatnot. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, comments?
Next, we have Jane.
Hi guys. It's Jane Hamilton. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Jane.
Hi, guys and ladies from the East Coast. I want to keep it with planning commission and one of the, one of the things, and this might be a town council thing, but just one, the thing that I wanted to say, I'm a neighbor from the four o'clock run subdivision. What I wanted to say, and I want to say this because you guys spoke about this this evening, about the process, and you are, planning commission is a huge part of the process. We all operate our homes differently. Some of us live in them, some of us, it's a complete business. Some of us entertain them at different, entertain in them different times of the year, especially in that four o'clock run subdivision. What I wanted to say is throughout this process, even before, years ago, when BGV was looking at this piece and this huge scope that's going there, there's always been a sense of calm that they are approachable. You guys are approachable at commission and staff, and that, that makes even a small homeowner be able to say, okay, okay, we'll make this work. So yes, this is going to be a big project and it's going to be timely, and that'll affect us in different ways. But this team has, has worked really well with, I will say personally with me, and I know some of the other neighbors that represent our old neighborhood, four o'clock run subdivision. I just, I wanted to thank all of you guys involved with that, and we'll just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Reminder to keep all comments to three minutes. Anybody else online?
Last call. I saw a hand up and then it was put down a couple times, so last call for online comments.
Anybody by phone?
Nobody else with hands raised.
Okay, we'll open up to anybody in attendance here for public comment. Please step up to podium and state your name.
I'm Dave Allen, and we're in the Boulder Ridge Circle right next door. And so we have a vested interest. Our biggest concern is during the construction, how are we going to be able to access the ski, the ski runs from our house? So will the pathway, the sidewalk along Ski Hill Road be open all the time during the ski season?
Graham, can you answer that question?
Graham, Frank, BGV. So Dave, the sidewalk will be open and the ski easement goes down to the sidewalk. There may be times when a flagger has a truck coming in, something of that nature that you may get delayed, but the intent is for that to remain open all the way to where you could get to the stairs to go up to the gondola there.
And coming, coming down into Boulder Ridge Road, there's a public access coming down. We go up that public access to get to the ski slopes. How are we going to use that during the construction and afterwards?
Our, our construction is outside of that construction access and are set back in our subsequent hole. So that will remain open, right? It's an un-groomed kind of
Right, it is.
Neighborhood maintained area, and it'll remain that way. There won't be any fencing precluding you from going up.
Or coming back down.
Correct.
Okay, splendid. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. The rest in public in attendance. Anybody else? Comments? Close public comments and move on to commissioner comments. Mr. Giller, would you like to short out us off there?
This is a really carefully considered project. There have been years of work that have gone into the planning and now the preliminary design. It's gone through an extensive public review process, and I applaud the entire team. I think Sarah's done an amazing job, and this project has my support, and I think it complies with the design code, the master plan, and all the other town requirements. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Susan, comments?
I appreciate what Mike just said. I think that a lot of thought and work has gone into this, and I think that it's going to be a very handsome project.
Thank you, Susan. Matt?
Now I applaud all the hard work that everyone has done to get us to where we are. I do have a comment about the point analysis, particularly the positive four points for the weather station. It states in subsection, oh, what is it? See other design features. I think that's why are the four points were awarded from. That if you're getting points in either subsection A or B, that no points would be allowed in subsection C. So that if you're taking points for that energy audit, then you have to not take points for the weather station.
That is
My understanding of the code.
That's correct. That was a mistake. Yep.
So that's the only comment. I know it doesn't affect, it doesn't take the project into the negative points analysis, but I would like to, you know, point that out, that the point analysis may be incorrect.
Nice catch.
Catch, yeah. And that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Elaine, comments?
I just want to thank everyone for their hard work on the project. Beautiful property up there, and I think it's great use of that property with the gondola going up there. Yeah, anything you guys can do to help your neighbors out up there. Sounds like you're working hard to do that, so just keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. And Alan?
Just to concur with the rest of my commissioners, I think a great job by Sarah and staff, and appreciate the back and forth with the applicant and taking our comments into account. I do want to say to the public and the public comments we got, we do read the letters. And to that point, I know there was one letter, someone was talking about their view shed, and this, the view corridor is very different from your own personal view shed. So we do, you know, that's hence, we were making sure that the interpretation of view corridor was correct. But this is not a view shed issue from properties at One Ski Hill Place. And I do appreciate that the applicant maybe wasn't communicated to the neighbors, but that you offered to do something about the pet spa and park and be willing to consider a different location for that. Otherwise, I think it's a great project, and I won't miss the admin billing in the locker room up there.
I will just concur with all my other commissioners, but with the add-on that I will miss the locker room up there since I've used it for many, many years. But we move on. Thank you. With that, we will, can I get a motion?
We do need the applicant to clarify if they would rather take the positive four points for the Davis Vantage Pro Weather System, or if you would rather have the two points for the hers rating, because it's one or the other, so that would affect your point analysis. The Davis Vantage Pro, so they will be at positive four points instead of positive six.
So we would look for a motion to include the change to the point analysis.
Mr. Giller, would you like to give us a motion?
I'm like Sarah, I'm scrolling. Here we go.
Scrolling Sarah. I hope that's not my new nickname.
Page 13, I know, it's still blurry.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I recommend the planning commission approve the Imperial Hotel and Private Residences parentheses, this says partial four.
This is parcel four?
Oh, that's right, five is the other one.
Yeah.
And cucumber gulch preserve preventative maintenance area, PMA variants, PL 2024 0475, located at 1599 Ski Hill Road. The project having met all applicable and absolute policies and receiving a passing score of positive two points, four points.
I said four. Yeah, so four points.
Four. With the, with the amendment.
Basically, he said amending the passing point analysis from plus six to point plus four.
Amending the passing point analysis from plus six to plus four points under the relative policies at this final hearing with the attached findings and conditions of approval.
Can we pause for one second? Because we probably need, if we're removing the hers portion, there's probably a condition of approval concerning a final hers rating that we'd want to remove and then number accordingly, or renumber accordingly.
What he said.
With amended and modified findings and conditions?
Reflect, reflect the modified point analysis.
Do you need to, does he need to verbalize that?
He could just say, as recommended by staff, what Chris said.
My second.
All right, we have a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Gort?
Yes.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Lees is absent.
Great, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. It's been a great process. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to combined hearings, starting with the Sebar, eh, Miho, I should be able, Mishwakan, I should be able to say that, large vendor cart, 13445 State Highway 9, PL 2025-00, what was that, 59? And I think Cliff is going to present that for us. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. Hello, planning commission. As mentioned, tonight, we are looking at a large vendor cart application for Sebor Mishwakan. This is going to be a new 100-square-foot vendor cart that is selling Mexican cuisine at the Colorado Building Supply, formerly known as the BBC. So I don't believe we have the applicant with us tonight, but just to quickly go through everything, staff basically reviewed the proposal against all applicable large vendor cart requirements under policy 47, I think it's 49, and staff has no concerns. They do have the allowed density as well as the parking. It is not going to be connected to the sewer system. It will be connected to the local power with no generator. Let's see, there's no concerns around height. They are locating the cart around an already kind of improved landscaped area within the parking lot. And then finally, there is no signage approved with this application. Staff will approve that in a separate sign permit in the future. With staff, we're definitely recommending approval with the findings and conditions, including business licensing and any necessary things from the health department. So I'll take any questions or comments.
Great. Thank you, Cliff. Alan, do you have any questions for?
No samples? No, no questions.
We really got to work with the applicant. The next applicant will get those for you.
Day Maya too, hey?
Elaine, any questions? Matt?
I have no questions.
Susan?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
I have no questions. Seeing as the applicant does not, is the applicant here or online?
Neither.
Okay, so that we can just move right to public hearing, I guess. If there's any comments, if you're online and wish to comment, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen and press star nine, and if you're attending by phone, then press star six to unmute yourself. please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen and press star nine. And if you're attending by phone, then press star six to unmute yourself.
No one online raising their hands.
Okay.
Final call.
To anybody in, in attendance. There doesn't seem to be anybody in attendance. So we will move on from the public hearing and um, go to planning commissioner comments, which I think we can get quickly through. Mike?
Uh, nice project. I support it. It meets the uh, town design code.
Great.
No comments. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I don't have any comments, no.
No comments.
I think it's a great idea, very opportunistic for the cart owner. Should do very well.
I have no comments other than bad timing. I'm retiring and don't go to the BBC or the anymore. Oh, well.
Some burritos, yeah.
Well, you're always welcome at the cart, Ethan. You're more than welcome to go back.
Down there very much. Okay, so I guess we have to have a motion. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll move. Um, I'll move approval of uh, the food vendor, large vendor cart uh, by Sabora Mishwa Khan. PL twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five nine located at thirteen four four five State Highway nine. With the passing point analysis of zero points along with the attached findings and conditions of approval.
Do I have a second?
Are you on a second?
All right. Chris?
All right, Mr. Giller.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Gort.
Yes.
Mr. Fractor.
Yep.
We'll move on to uh, hearing for the BGV parcel number five residential lot subdivision. Lot five, Peak Eight subdivision, PL twenty twenty-five dash zero zero four seven. And that one. Who's presenting that to us tonight? I believe that's Sarah.
Me again. Sarah Crump, planner for the town. One moment while I get organized, hopefully less scrolling.
I know when I saw the full packet size, I realized it was the development agreement twice. Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
The only good.
This is soft. There we go. So we have um, the parcel two, or sorry, it's backup, parcel five subdivision plat. There we go. Parcel five. This is pursuant to the development agreement, which was approved by the town and uh, be between the town and BGV previously last year, April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and then this commission approved a previous subdivision for this uh, parcel five location. In August of twenty twenty-four last year, um, separating this parcel from the remainder of track C, which is the majority of Peak Eight, that's um, uh, the Peak Eight ski area ownership. And so this, just to orient where we are, um, let's take a quick look on GIS. So we're here at the end of four o'clock run road. It's this almost triangular piece of pie here. So the development agreement contemplated that this parcel would be subdivided further into two single-family lots. They have um, proposed to do so now and each lot will be approximately half acre in size with, with disturbance envelopes. And they will share a private access from the existing county maintained four o'clock run road, which currently terminates here um, with a gate. Um, and there is access across the, this parcel existing for the ski area and public. Um, that public access will be maintained with the subdivision. So I don't want anybody to worry. Um, four o'clock run residents will still be able to walk or bike through this area and access recreation in the ski area. Staff um, has compared this subdivision to and analyzed it with our subdivision standards. And we find that um, it meets the design that's compatible with natural features. There are no significant natural features on this lot is heavily treed, um, both, both lot one and lot two. Except for the dirt road path that's currently going through. Um, with future development of a single-family home site on either of the lots, we would require um, consistent with our development code, maintenance of the trees and preservation of those of the vegetation that's outside of the disturbance envelope. Um, but no significant natural features such as wetlands or rock crops or um, rock outcroppings or anything like that on the site. But they are heavily treed. For future um, drainage and um, infrastructure associated with drainage, that will be required to be reviewed by the engineering department and the um, water utility at the time of application for a construction of a single-family home on either lot. I did wanna clarify um, something that wasn't um, exactly correct in the staff report. The current owner BGV um, is going to install the utility connections at this time. Um, so the main hookups to water and sewer, it's that burden will not be passed on to the future law owner. Should they wanna build a home there and in the future, BGV is gonna provide those utility um, main connections at this time. The future owners of lot one or lot two would be responsible for their individual connections and um, whichever lot uh, is developed first would need to provide the paved road and shared access extension off of four o'clock run road. So making that distinction. In the future, um, if homes are constructed on these, either of these sites, they will be required to pay a one point two five times the then current um, water improvement, plant improvement, investment fee. That's per the development agreement and that was agreed to by the applicant and it is reflected in a plat note on the draft here. So in addition to the public easement, um, that's dedicated for pedestrians and recreation to the town, there's um, overlapping easements that will exist in this fifty-foot area here. And one of those is to the ski area for continued access through the site um, for maintenance and activities on the ski area. And they're also going to provide a sewer main access for the, a sewer main easement for the ski area. And a um, there's an existing turnaround easement that's for the county for snow plowing. And so that'll be maintained as well through this re-subdivision. When comparing lot one and lot two to the dimensions and standards and the um, in the subdivision requirements, each one is greater than five thousand square feet, which is the minimum in our code. Um, both, as I stated previously, a half acre. They both have disturbance envelopes and the plat dictates um, allowances for within and with, outside of each disturbance envelope that exactly mirror what's allowed in our subdivision standards. The disturbance envelopes were designed with the front coming off of the shared access easement. And that's a twenty-five foot requirement. And then they have a combined fifty on each side. And they've given the majority thirty-five foot setback to the existing neighborhood. So they'll be farther away from existing homes on the east side. And then a fifteen-foot side on to the west and fifteen foot on each rear. You'll notice that the lot two comes to an extreme point and a narrow um, disturbance envelope here. This was actually um, contemplated in the development agreement. And so the standards that require uh, width to be no um, the length of the lot to be no more than two times the width, um, that was waived for this particular subdivision, as well as the requirement that the disturbance envelopes be platted in right angles. So you notice these are greater than right angles in some cases, especially on lot one. So those requirements were waived. The number one plat note um, is that no future home on this, on either parcel can be greater than seventy-five hundred square feet. That's also dictated from the development agreement. And again, it's a plat note and that counts as above and below grade. So total density, no greater than seventy-five hundred square feet. As is stated in the staff report, the open space requirements and dedication or fee and loot. Those requirements were covered previously when track C was originally subdivided. And so it's not applicable to like future um, subdivisions of this parcel. With that, I have no more comments, but staff does recommend that you approve this two lot subdivision tonight uh, this combined hearing. I'm happy to take questions if you have any. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sarah.
Matt, you wanna start yourself?
Sure, I have no questions.
Perfect. Elaine?
No questions.
Again. Alan?
Uh, no questions. Good job, Sarah.
No questions. Thanks, Sarah.
Mike, come on.
I think I heard you say that the easement allows the four o'clock neighbor, four o'clock sub- four o'clock subdivision neighbors to pass through, but the easement would allow any member of the public.
Any member of the public. It's, we've had comments from specifically those neighbors, so I wanted to make sure that they are clear online.
Okay.
They will be able to walk through, but it is to any member of the public, uh, public pedestrian and recreation access easement to dedicated to the town.
Okay, that helps my understanding. Thank you. No further questions.
I have no questions. So this time we'll open up to the applicant. I see Graham up there eagerly anticipating addressing this hearing. Any questions for the applicant? Great, well done. Okay, we'll open up for public hearing. Again, if you're online, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen and press star nine. And if you're attending uh, the meeting by phone, then press star six to unmute yourself.
No hands raised.
Very good. Anybody out there in the vast audience wish to make comments? No? Then we will move on to commissioner comments. Suzie, wanna open that up first?
I have no comments.
Okay, Mike?
Uh, no comments.
Wow.
No comments.
Elaine?
No comments.
Alan?
I'd just love to see what they're gonna build in that disturbance envelope and that too. No comments.
And I have no comments. So that said, uh, we can move on to a motion.
I can do it. I got it here. I move for, to approve the parcel five subdivision filing number one. PL dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero four seven located at five five zero four o'clock run road at this combined hearing with the attached findings and conditions of approval.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Great. Can I get a roll call there, Chris?
Absolutely. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Giller.
Yes.
Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
Ms. Gort.
Yes.
Great. Thank you all. And with that, we can move on to Mark's council update. Good night, guys.
Thank you, Ethan. I'll make this quick and short. Um, because the council did not have a meeting on their regular fourth Tuesday month, but they did have a special meeting last week. Um, Ethan understands this because he, he was in attendance, but essentially um, there was nothing really public to discuss. Um, i- they went into two executive sessions. So I really don't have anything to report to you. So anyway, uh, yeah, their uh, their next meeting is next, next Tuesday on the twenty-seventh, they will be having a council retreat probably from noon until about three or four. Uh, we'll, they'll be setting goals, things like that prior to a regular meeting then following that. That's my update.
Thank you, Mark.
I have just a quick question.
Sure.
Um, what is the schedule for like code updates or something like that? Like what, how often do these policies or codes get reviewed and maybe changed?
So we don't have a regular set schedule. We kinda do them as we identify needs. We did about six years ago, uh, well, actually about seven and a half, eight years ago, we started what was called a comprehensive code amendment effort. And we spent like a year working with um, some reps, including planning commission reps and architects. Um, people like that within a committee. And we did come up with a yeah, pretty comprehensive list of code amendments that were adopted in two thousand nineteen. Um, to kinda look at the whole code and we kind of scoured through as much as we could, not that we caught everything. Um, but um, but that's probably the closest thing maybe to what you're thinking of. Um, we typically just take these on as we identify issues and we'll probably some, and then we'll bring them to the council to see if we get a head nod from them, come back to you guys to work through the details.
What would initiate an amendment?
Um, it could be, if, if a, for example, a planning commissioner um, or a staff member pointed out something that we thought was problematic with the code or something we wanted to do, we would definitely be all ears to hear um, your thoughts on something if you had some specific examples and, you know, we could discuss those more. We probably wanna have a discussion here also.
Right. I'm just curious as
Yeah.
as to what the process was.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, you know, the one that we're working on right now, I brought to you a couple of weeks ago, the ones related, kind of associated with uh, neighborhood preservation. So the EV uh, chargers, uh, landscaping, uh, potentially for single-family homes. Those are a couple of the ones. I think we've heard from various commissioners and then uh, the council has concerns for them. So in along with some of the other ones related to the, the setbacks in height that we talked about. But our next step in that process um, or is important for the council is to get public input as we are having a meeting. Is that the twenty-seventh of
Um.
May, just a meeting for the twenty-first. So we're working with our communications team where they'll start uh, doing some public outreach on that, but we essentially did the one with the contractors and the architects, then brought the planning commission and just kinda work in the process before we go back to the to the planning commission. So that's kinda where we are in that one. It, um, just because the council's had some really full agendas lately. It slowed down just, just a little bit, cause I think they got to a level of comfort where they're like this is where we're going, but it is an emergency is kind of, I think, you know, what they, how they thought about it.
Says the process.
No, absolutely, Matt. Good question.
Any other questions, issues, concerns? All right. Well, with that, I'll close the meeting at six fifty-eight PM. Yeah, move right along. What's that?
Yeah.